Good evening, everybody. Good evening, my colleagues. I do want to note that Mr. Kim is excused from the meeting. The open meeting could be out, okay? And then we have the Pledge of Allegiance and who wants to celebrate the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, speak in.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Make the entertaining motion to adopt our agenda. Go move, Miss Warren. Just two seconds, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. I did mention that Dr. Kim is excused from the meeting. So, in closed session, we deal with three items. Number one is evaluation of superintendent. Number two is opening the superintendency. The search itself, and then number three is the opening of a position at this point called Director of Personnel for the future. In all outcomes, we had unanimous agreement. And that's all I have to report at this point. To Board of Luces and to underscore the superintendency, the new superintendency, we want to make sure that we start, we're trying, our goal is to start July 1st with the superintendent. And, yeah, we did, like I said before, number three is we're not personnel directorship of personnel. And we accepted a resignation that we needed after the last meeting. Thank you. As our closed session. Are there any individuals interested presenting? There are more than one, two, three people on the same item. It's not on the agenda. These are items that are not on the agenda. And keep it down to one or two representatives in the cluster type of presentation. And you're giving, we're doing two, two minutes or three minutes? Three minutes on each one. Okay? So as you step up, the clock starts moving. Thank you, Ms. Rosales.
All right. I'm going to print out my notes for myself. So I wanted to talk about a couple of things. First is about the article in the Californian about vaccination. It was in the Californian on February 6th. In the article, Dr. Luces said that only one of our fifteen schools is below the ninety percent vaccination threshold rate and that that was University Park. But the next day, we teachers, I don't know if throughout the district, we received a printout and it says that Lincoln, well, it's a little hard to read because I'm not quite sure who put it in my box and who to ask. So I wanted some clarification because it says, the way it looks said, only seventy-six percent of Lincoln's vaccinations are up to me. So I am hoping for some clarification on that. I also would like to say that the first, we've kind of heard of any issues. I mean, besides reading in the paper about the measles outbreak, was when we read that article in the newspaper. And that's kind of a, it seems like that should be something discussed with us if there's an issue. Also, after the last school boarding, the school board meeting, I was asked over and over from teachers, what was happening with the superintendent? And I explained all I knew that the board president come out of closed session, reported that the superintendent had recommended a search. Parents asked for clarification that night. All we learned was yes, there was to be a search. But I will say that many teachers have also, also asked me in that time afterwards, if the board had candidates for the position because something was said about having a few people in mind. So it really was not clear. We didn't know that S E T C's executive board met with the superintendent last Tuesday. Nothing was said about retirement. It wasn't until the next day in the newspaper that we found out that the superintendent retired or retiring. And then it was revealed in today's paper that the board was notified at the last school board meeting that the superintendent is retiring. And I just have to ask the question, why is something as simple as an announcement of a retirement? I understand there might be some difficulties, but still, why can it not be done in a simple, straightforward manner? There are still teachers that don't know that superintendent's retiring and because maybe they didn't read the right newspaper. That shouldn't be where we get all our information about what's going on in our district. It's especially something that is so impactful on us. So I'd like to ask that the district look at giving us more clarification, giving us more information through the proper channels, which is through district, district channels, rather than having us rely on Mr. Rosales for our information about what's happening.
Thank you very much. Yes, yes, sir. Your name, please?
Enrique Mendez Flores, member of the community. And before the clock starts running, I would like to have clarification on the agenda. On one hand, right after the reconvene in open session, I read that it says that we can address ourselves to any item on the agenda. And then, and the individual deciding to address the board, it says, not appearing on the agenda. So I just need clarification before the clock shut me up. And I would like to say good evening to board members and to administrators of this great school district. And I want to address myself to item number seven in the agenda. I believe that this item ought to be tabled because I have not seen in past agendas that an item was placed on an information item depriving us as a public to give some kind of input as to the upcoming search committee in case there's going to be any name. And the other item is that I would like to volunteer my services in case you guys are going to consider the community's input for your search committee. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. As a reminder, these are appearing, not appearing on the agenda, okay? We invite for clarification.
Do any more members, can you hear me? Thank you. I am sad to see the turn of time because we have a vision for the future. And I would like to address three recommendations for selecting our new, our next superintendent. One of my recommendations would be...
This item, we have it on the agenda later.
Okay.
If you're addressing it right now, we'll both ask you to wait.
Okay, to wait? Okay, thank you.
Your heart's in it and we appreciate that. These are items, and I don't see them either.
Hello, Sean Henry, parent of children in Mission Park. I wanted to thank Michelle is for getting up the new school accountability report cards. And so I did have a question. Is there a way to get past ones? I only have the for my school the last two years. And I was hoping to get maybe the last previous five years for Mission Park. Is there possibly like to get those in a week or so or, you know? Wonderful.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You don't have any other individuals? Yes, ma'am. Enrique.
My name is Stacy Wilson. I'm a parent at my own school. I just wanted to address the resignation of our personnel director. I'm sorry to hear that. And Kat Willingham was the principal when I was a student at University Park School. Right? And so I'm just, I'm, I'm sad that our district is going through a tumultuous time where we would have a situation that you would watch through inside during the whole school year. So, oh, thank you for your service. I enjoyed it.
Thank you. We'll accept the requirements as well. Thank you. I too was, was part of that class. Any other, any other person? I heard that one. Any other person? Especially the board with items tied on the agenda. I don't see any hands going up and I don't see anybody walking up here right now. So can we go to the next item, please? Consent items, which are presented to us by administration. And their motion to accept them. Motion to approve consent items on the agenda. I have a motion. And a second on the motion. Any discussion? Comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How many, no, say none? Okay, four to zero. Four to zero, and we're going into action items. And that's the superintendent search. And let the recommendation comes from administration, so I'll let Dr. Luces.
While we do our directions, President, we contact all the firms, the standard. We contacted last year. So, the COSCA group, the one we did in Monterey and Inglewood, we contacted a leadership associate, the one who are doing currently, Carmel. We contacted Dave Long and Associates and Education Leadership, one, two, three, four. So we, they sent their proposals. You have in the agendas, in your agendas, each proposal of these four firms. And we asked them to be available for some questions, comments, or a brief five-minute presentation. So this morning, we received the information that COSCA group is unavailable for tonight. Leadership Associates will be available now to the phone conference to give a brief presentation. Dave Long and Associates unable to be here tonight. And Education Leadership Services are here, I think.
Education Leadership are here?
Yes. They are present here to give a five-minute presentation. Basically, two people, and two firms are not available. And one is available by phone. And the other one are here present. That's the status at this moment.
I'm going to ask Dr. John Cruz. Two presented them and limited five minutes, so. If we need to, yeah. Thank you, board members. I have Dr. John Cruz with me. Dr. Cruz and I would be keen to work with you if we were selected as your search firm. In the interest of time, we did have a PowerPoint presentation to present to you, which we did, if you'll recall, back in October. So we won't go through this again if you want to limit us to five minutes. So we do want to tell you a little bit about ourselves. I've been a search consultant for over ten years. I work with the California School Boards Association. And then I'm the executive director of Education Leadership Services. I've been the lead consultant in about fifty superintendent searches in the state of California in districts ranging from one hundred and forty students to as many as thirty-seven thousand students. Education Leadership Services will customize the search in the way the board would direct us to. We provide some options for you and some guidelines. Most recently, we did the superintendent search in Santa Rita Union School District, in Monterey County, and Periessa Union, San Jose. And then several others throughout the state of California. I've been a superintendent myself. I've been a California State Superintendent of the Year for Science Education. I've been a mentor superintendent through about thirty-five superintendents. One of the things about our firm is whoever you select as superintendent who are available to the board for the next year at no cost, by phone or email, so board members can phone or email us, and superintendent can also do that. Education Leadership Services also has a superintendent's leadership academy. We've had about forty superintendents participate in that or aspiring superintendents. So we have a network of people we can count on. We have consultants throughout the state. Dr. Cruz would be your lead consultant with support from me. The rest of our consultants will be assisting in the recruitment of your next superintendent. One of the most important parts that a superintendent search firm does for you is to actively recruit sitting superintendents, experienced superintendents, and highly qualified aspiring superintendents. Because you just can't put an ad in the paper and wait. You have to get on the phones, you have to call, you have to disseminate information. With that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Cruz. Dr. Cruz has been superintendent for sixteen years in a unified school district. He's bilingual in English and Spanish. So when we do our community input, he's available to everyone in your district to communicate with. Dr. Cruz?
Thank you. So nice to be back in Salinas. I spent at least four or five months in Santa Rita last year. And I think if you talked to any of their trustees, they'll be very happy with the work that we did in Santa Rita. And they're currently very happy with their superintendent. One thing that I really want to emphasize, we spend a lot, a lot of time talking about our process. But one thing I really do want to encourage and I really want to emphasize, particularly to parents and teachers that are here. Our process is very transparent. We spend a lot of time talking to community people, key stakeholders, teachers, union leadership, classified staff, principals. We make every effort in this process to make sure that we are as transparent as possible so that the school community in Salinas Elementary feels that they had input in terms of selecting the next superintendent. That takes a lot of time, takes a lot of work, but it's something that is part of our guiding principle in regards to the superintendent search. Because we feel that, as, you know, as your representatives, you want us to go out and talk to the folks and make sure that we get their input so that when we put together a leadership profile that really reflects not only what you want, but what your school community wants. And we spend a lot of time doing that. We feel that's an important part of the process. One of the other things that I would really like to mention is that we don't come in with a, with a stable of candidates. We don't operate that way. As Wendell mentioned, there are a lot of superintendents, current superintendents, those who aspire to be superintendents that are interested in be in your district and will call us. And we encourage them to apply. But the reason we spend a lot of time putting that leadership profile is because that is what we use the criteria to recommend candidates for you to interview. And that's why we spend a lot of time doing that. So I really look forward to working with your district. I have spent a lot of time in this area. My wife is a King City girl, so, you know, there's not a lot to do in King City. So we used to come to Salinas for things to do. So in any event, I have spent a lot of time in Salinas and I really like your community. Hopefully, I'll get the opportunity to work with you all.
Dr. Cruz, thank you very much. Let me finish with some highlights of our firm. Forty-nine to fifty superintendents are placed. Forty-nine out of fifty honored their initial three-year contract. Ninety percent of the superintendents either are still with their district or retired from their district. Of the last twenty searches we've done, fifty percent have been women and fifty percent have been men. We are very, we have a successful record of gender equity and ethnicity equity. We provide ongoing support to your superintendent throughout the following year and to the board. And lastly, our reference letters are exemplary. You will read through them and see that board members have said, we've done two or three searches with different companies and Education Leadership Services has been the best they've worked with. So with that, we would be very honored to work with you in the selection of your next superintendent. Thank you very much. We will take the information and have any questions from any of our board members? Yes. Ms. Warren?
Could you describe your timeline?
Yes, typically, the timeline would be about three months. From the first time we meet with the board and go through the planning session, we will share with you a tentative timeline. It's flexible. We want to work with the board so that every board member can be at every meeting. We can adjust the timeline as needed. Typically, we close about eight weeks after we first meet with you. And then the screening and planning of prior to the interviews, about two weeks. And then the board would select their candidate for interview and hold the interviews. So that you would have your superintendent selected in about a three-month time period. One more question.
Could you describe what a stakeholder meeting would look like? How you set it up? The types of questions you might ask the public?
Right, there are basically a number of ways the public would have input. We want widespread input. We want to ensure that anyone who wants to give us input on the qualifications and expectations of the superintendent would be allowed to do that. We would individually interview each board member. We would work with your district administrative assistant to, would use letters to send out inviting individuals and groups to meet with us. Typically, we would meet with your administrative staff, your classified employees association, your teachers association, and individual groups such as school site councils, band boosters, academic boosters. We would schedule those interviews, private confidential interviews. We would also have available to you to post online on your website, a written survey for people who could not meet with us individually. In Spanish and English. We would also have our cell phones available to you so that people who want to speak to us, who work, who can come during the day, would like to talk to us. So that there'd be a number of ways people could give input. Written surveys, online, personal interviews, telephone calls. We don't want to have anyone in your district say that they didn't have an opportunity to provide any. I just want to remind us that this is not an interview, but this is a presentation. Right. And we go step by step forward. And there may be some questions in the audience, but I allow our board members to ask the questions first. Any question?
No, I don't have a question.
Not a nerd.
I just wanted to say that this is the kind of information that we need to have before we get a decision. You know, what your process is, how you contact people, how they're able to contact you. That's the kind of information we need.
If I may add, it's also really critical information for your new superintendent. Because I know, and I could use Santa Rita as an example. After the interviews were completed and the candidate was selected, the superintendent sat down with me and said, you know, I know you can't share confidential information, but can you share maybe four or five areas that came out of those community surveys in terms of areas that I can address? So in terms of getting your superintendent to begin to look for future goals and objectives, that community input is so valuable, not only for you in terms of your decision, but your superintendent in terms of, you know, what are some next steps I need to look at in the next five or six months?
Okay? Okay, I don't have any other questions. Thank you very much. I'm gonna have to choose about two or three people if they have any questions of the leadership group. Is there anybody in the public that wants to ask a question? I have one. Please identify yourself because our guests don't know who you are.
You probably said it and I just missed it. My name is Sylvia Capriyan, Roosevelt Second Grade. How much is this going to cost us? The cost to the party, whoever gets elected, please?
We don't know exactly how much it's gonna cost, except that we have a limit here of about thirty. They're all listed at about twenty, twenty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of in-kind compensation.
Is it okay to make a comment at this time?
Is a question of the leadership group that was here?
No, that's not what I...
Okay. Anybody else? That's why they're standing up, so it's okay.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes. Buenas noches.
Noches, por favor. Bueno, buenas tardes y espero la comodidad.
Okay, and we have an interpreter, our interpreter here.
Si, hay preguntas?
Okay.
Mi nombre es Cristina Mejia. Dice el señor que si tenemos alguna pregunta. Cristina Mejia, and she is addressing his request if anybody has questions. Como dijo la señora, la directora, perdón. A mí mi pregunta es, ¿cuánto van costar? Y también, este... Comentó que se hace esto también en las escuelas, en los consejos de las escuelas y a los grupos de padres de las escuelas, ¿se les comunica esto? Her question was also with the cost, what the cost would be of consultants. And she wants to make sure and clarify that school site groups will also be included in this process. Yo soy parte del consejo de la escuela y soy parte del PDG de la escuela. Es de quién nos va a avisar o quién nos va a decir que ellos van a contactarnos. Por miedo de quién nos vamos a enterar, tenemos que venir aquí para mediarlo por nosotros mismos. I am part of the school site council and also PTG group at my school. And I'd like to know how we will be contacted to be involved in this process. Do we have to come and figure it out ourselves or will we be informed somehow?
Yes, Mr. Cruz. Yes, we'll answer the question.
Sure. We work very closely with the superintendent secretary in terms of providing a schedule of times that either individuals or community groups. Sometimes we meet, we set aside some time to meet with school site councils or your ELAC or DLEC committees. And sometimes it's a lot easier if they just come in as a group and we talk to them and ask them the same questions we would as an individual. But we communicate that, we set the schedule up through the superintendent secretary, but we have written communication that goes out to the schools in both English and Spanish so that if folks want to set up an interview, they're free to do that. And they can do it as individuals or as a group.
Yeah, and also you mentioned the website.
Yes, website, telephone calls, whatever works for them. You know, we can do it during the day, but I know people work. And we can do it in the evening if necessary. We'll do what's necessary in order to accommodate the folks. And like I said, they can do it either as individuals or as a group.
Dr. Cruz?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
For your explanation. I hope, I hope the young lady... That matters.
Gracias, este, por su respuesta al señor. Y si nos puede dejar sus datos para nosotros sería perfecto. Como miembro y de la escuela, me gustaría llevarla a mi escuela. She wants to thank you for your information and she would like the consultant's information so she can also take that back to her group, her group. Thank you.
Señor, again, Mr. Enrique Mendez Flores.
Would I ask Dr. Cruz, is that his last name?
Is that your last name?
Cruz. Would you be kind to share with our community, in your opinion, what are some of the greatest needs of our district? And what are you, what are you going to be proposing to the superintendent to be? Perhaps in less than three minutes?
I could do that. You know what? I have to be very honest. I don't know what your needs are. That's why the community input portion of this process is so important. Because through this, I get a picture of not only what your needs are, but what you're looking for in a future leader and how that future leader is going to meet those needs before identifying. So at this point in time, I can't tell you what your needs are, but in a month, I can very specifically tell you what your needs are and what a future superintendent is going to need to do to address those needs.
Thank you very much. Go sit down with him.
Go sit down with him. Thank you very much. That's more to do, you know. And Brilliant, thank you very much. Dr. Chang, Chang, and Dr. Cruz, thank you very much. Any other questions? I'm going to go on to the agenda. Yep. Okay. For the public?
Yes. Thank you. My name is Lisa Crummy, and I am a multiple grade teacher. I've taught fifth and sixth grade as well as been a teaching vice principal. And I recently lost my mom, and I want to commend the district on how they handled my leave of absence and say that I'm, that I am really sorry to see you go or retire. But at the same time, I want to bring to the attention to all board members that when you are choosing and when you are deciding who should make this decision, I want you to do what I asked my sixth graders to do. And when you lay down at night, I want you to ask yourself, is there something you could have done better? Is there something you could have done better for the better of the whole community, for the better of the whole population of our district versus what works for me? Because as a teacher, I lay down at night, and I know that what I think works for me and what I hold my own children accountable to might not be the same. And as the people making the decision of who is going to lead our district, you need to make sure 100% that the decisions you make are not benefiting any one specific population, any one specific group, because every student in our district matters. And we teach every student in our district regardless of anything. And that is the expectation you have of us, and so I encourage you and ask you and beg you to finally choose a person that is going to represent our entire population. And being from Mission Park, please don't compare us to Carmel anymore because we're not the same as Carmel. I am a combination, I am a result of the Carmel district. The population I went to school with does not represent Mission Park even by 5%. And you need to let that go, and you need to look at the fact that we as teachers are doing what is best for our children, and you need to look and say what is best for our district. And that's my request and what I ask and beg for the future of my career and the future of our students.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Well said. And same time, I do want to accept that a young lady is coming here. Please identify yourself.
Do I have to say everything again? I think I'm going to start from where I start.
We'll keep it brief.
I will.
Thank you.
I will. Cecilia Torres, and a preschool teacher at Shawnee School, and everybody knows me.
Your name again? Your name again? I'm sorry.
Cecilia Torres.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have only three recommendations that I feel that we are in searching for a new superintendent. The superintendent that is going to take Dr. Lusa's place should have a PhD, and also a superintendent should continue moving the district in the same direction as Dr. Lusa is doing. He or she should believe in the importance of learning more than one language. And also, my last recommendation should is the new superintendent should speak more than one language to better serve the community, not just one language only, because the population in Salinas is 100% Spanish speaker, but learning more language will be better for the children to communicate with everybody and also with the parents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to come? I wanted to keep it short.
Sorry, I would like to give a.
At the same time, I need to move the machines.
Sorry, I just want to clarify.
Clarify your statement or?
Yeah, no, I want to clarify that 100% of our parent population is not Spanish speaking.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much.
We're not going to go into more.
We're not going to be here, I already have a lot on the ground right now. Yes, sir, your name, please. This will be our last speaker. Thank you.
Sean Henry Parent in the district. It was really good to hear, you know, to get an opportunity to hear a search board talk about transparency and really not, you know, they don't have the answers. You know, the answers are within the community, within the teachers, or within the people, and finding it, and having a leader that comes into the district and really searches and looks for solutions. I've come to meetings here, and we've talked about Common Core, and I've heard a lot of pointing out all the problems, and we need a leader that's not going to talk about the bridge, because Common Core is a challenge for everybody. We need leaders that are basically telling you what they're doing to get you across the bridge. You have to identify the challenges and you have to get there. This district has had years to get ready for it. You know, there's going to be areas that are pluses. We've talked about the purchasing of technology, but every time I hear presentations here, it's a lot of fingers in the dike and excuses. And we need leadership that's going to come in for the students of the district and the teachers and really take a look at where we are and where we need to go and really be explaining how we're getting there. Have that vision and have that vision, you know, learned and brought together throughout the district so we get there, not talk about all the problems and excuses and waiting for other things. So we really need leader and leadership teams that will help our teachers in our schools and our students succeed and move forward and not have excuses and have what they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next lady. Yeah. Any comment from, yes, ma'am?
Sorry, before you move on, I have a request about communication. I heard this great presentation about how the community will be involved in selecting any board member. However, I think, well, my experience at Lincoln School is the lack of great communication. How will we get from this excellent group of people that's having a meeting to a group of concerned parents and community members who don't know that the meeting is taking place? And so I'm requesting that the district take responsibility for communicating in various ways with parents so that they are made fully aware in advance of these meetings or any place so we can be here. We want to be a part of that, obviously.
Let's get that agenda out of the public, okay? Yes, I'm assuming you're already finished, ma'am?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
Thank you, because there's someone behind you. I said last one, but. There's another young man in the back. I'm being generous now because we have a long agenda.
Mi nombre es Olivia Molinero y vengo de la escuela de los padres.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Molinero, and I'm here from the school, the Padres school.
And I come here to ask Dr. Lusa to retract him proposing to leave us.
No.
Porque tenemos un líder capacitado en él.
Because we have a fully capable leader in him.
Con la educación que tiene, podemos llevar a nuestros hijos.
With the education that he holds, we can move our children.
Ya que en nuestra escuela, en nuestro distrito, el 100%, como el 85% es de habla hispana, y de ese 85% de habla hispana es como un 35% dialecto.
Especially because in our student population, about 85% are Spanish-speaking, and of that 85, 35% are dialect languages.
Buscamos un superintendente que hable más de un idioma. El doctor Lusa lo tiene, ¿para qué buscar? ¿Para qué gastar en otras personas?
We need a superintendent that speaks more than one language. Dr. Lusa is able to speak more than one language, so why spend money and look for somebody when we already have him?
Cuando ese dinero lo podemos implementar en tecnología, en materiales para nuestros hijos.
When the funds could be used otherwise, in technology and instructional materials for our students.
Por favor, mesa directiva, consideren, señor Lusa, no nos deje. Lo apoyamos 100%, necesitamos de su ayuda y de nuestros hijos para el futuro mes.
So I'm asking the board to please reconsider. Dr. Lusa, please don't leave us. We are here to support you, and we need you for our students.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you very much. We have one more speaker, and then I'm going to move on to the rest of the agenda.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Jose Trujillo. I'm a graduate of El Capitan Elementary School and parent of children in the district. I listened to the presentation and some other comments that I've already made. First off, I was just one of, I was a last meeting, and I think there was a general agreement that the board and members of the public have to be respectful toward each other and respect each other's opinions and points of view. So I just would encourage that going forward. There are very, very many different constituencies and a lot of different points of views. I think each one has a valid point from their point of view and deserves to be heard respectfully. So I encourage that going forward. Regarding the presentation for the school search firm, a question was asked about the needs. He needs time to find out what the needs are specifically. I don't disagree with that, but I do know that having been involved in parent groups, school-site house meeting for years now, having graduated from elementary school district and the high school district here in Salinas, I can tell you that our needs are very many, and we have a diverse, diverse population out there. Just before the meeting, 80% of our district kids are socio-economic, disadvantaged students. 87% are Hispanic. 55% are English learners. I think anyone of those three or all three combined would present tremendous needs and present a great challenge to any person selected superintendent. So in looking, I would just like to, if at all possible, keep in mind that whoever is selected is going to have a tremendous task ahead of them. So I would encourage and insist that they have the educational and work background to deal with the challenges that they're going to be facing on day one. I think whoever is selected is going to need to be an effective listener and communicator with all the students and all the parents in the community and in the district. Bilingualism, I just don't see how that can happen without it. Clear vision for the district, I agree with that. The district has a lot of needs. We need to know where we're going. That person is going to be the leader for the entire group, the entire district, all the parents. So somebody needs to come in here and set a clear vision for everyone to follow. And I just don't see how that vision can omit the fact that we live in a complex interconnected world, becoming more so every day. Common Core, updated funding formulas, it's all coming online. And I just don't see how bilingualism is not a part of our future as more, the world is more and more connected going forward. Lastly, I would agree that there has to be an opportunity for members of the community to participate in whatever search is conducted. And you already have a lot of parents serving on school site councils, on the ELAC committees, on the EMAC committees, where you could do some outreach and encourage those parents and those constituencies to come forward and be involved in the search in whatever way it's conducted. Thank you for letting me add my seat.
Thank you very much. What school do you represent? I'm sorry.
I'm a parent, but my kids go to El Capitan.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay, last, I said it was left.
You keep saying left, so I'm going to get in line again.
No, we're just, I mean, seriously, this is the last speaker. The question is, we have it. This is it, we need to move on.
This is just a follow-up with what Tom, Mr. Trujillo was saying, and I think it's very important for whoever decides, whoever gets elected to be the superintendent. They need to know the needs. They need to know the culture of what we have here in Salinas. I'm hoping that we're not going to get somebody from, I don't know, Kansas, Wyoming, that has no idea what we have here in Salinas, and then tries to come in here and then dictate, you know, what they believe, you know, bilingualism is or having to deal with parents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are we going into consent? Close consent. Yeah, we could, this period right now, if there are board members that have questions or just turn them on share. Ms. Barnes?
I would, due to the fact that we have three of them missing, and we really need the public to also see the presentations, that we need to make the best decision possible, and it needs to be thorough. So we, some people have seen this, it was a year ago, others have not. So due to the short timeline that we've given the presenters, I would move that we extend this, carry this to the next board meeting and have the other three present so that you, so that everyone can see all four, and then we can make a decision at that time. That's our motion.
That's motion of the board?
Second.
The second, and it's, what's the discussion on this one?
We need to hear from everybody.
Okay.
Before we make a decision, the information we got tonight was excellent. I mean, that's what I wanted.
For the second?
Thank you, sir.
Somebody did. Ms. Barnes and Mr. Hoffman, yeah. The move and the second there, discussion, speak, please. All in favor? All in favor? Okay. Okay, we're going to go into item number eight. Item number eight is informational and discussion item as well, and it's about job description on behavioral, behavioral specialty specialist.
Excellent, yes. Thank you, Mr. President. And this is Chitas will be joining me. This is a job description that we're bringing to you for information tonight, and it is part of trying to meet the needs of our students and parents who may have some challenging behaviors. We see this also as a way of providing support to our teachers in the classroom. This individual would work with general ed population as well as special ed. We do have, I have to admit, we borrowed this job description, and we do have one thing that we would like you to remove before we go on with further discussion, and that is on page two, the sixth bullet there, which talks about promotion, discipline, termination or transfer. We would like to scratch that from our draft of this job description. Page two of the job description, and it talks about screens, interviews, and recommends candidates for employment, permission, discipline, termination, or transfer. We need to scratch that from the job.